Go to Superintendent Skylar Prowitz, you are up.
Hey, thank you for coming on the first time on the agendas to open up. The motor grader bids have already all back here now with a very good person. Good afternoon.
Hey Steve.
I've got coffee for everyone.
Okay, we're not doing window wipers.
The side window wipers?
Is that what's going?
Yeah, we don't.
Right window, side window wiper?
We don't have a lot of wipers on the, oh, on the side. They're actually open windows, so it'd be almost next to impossible to have them, but.
Sure.
But otherwise, it's, it's bid basically, um, the specs are the same as what you did last fall or summer, last summer. With the exception of they just put the blade, um, lift cylinders, absorption, uh, the blade impact that's included in the bid. And then it has a seven year, seventy-five hundred hour warranty on it. And also seven years, seventy-five hundred hour guaranteed maintenance, so there is no cost. Hammond County for anything other than tires, glass and that, general maintenance stuff. But any repairs are all covered on that seven years, seventy-five hundred hours, all the mileage is covered.
All labor, all expenses.
Yeah. And that's what it's been, I don't know, for the last, like, pretty much since I guess I, yeah, the last. Yep. And then, um, if you got, anybody have any questions, just go ahead. The two trades, that first one, both of them basically are on a guaranteed repurchase program. That is up, um, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. And that buyback is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. So on the one, which has got higher hour ones, I don't remember where, if that's one in Hazelton or in Lincoln. Um, but that six eighty-three has the higher hours and that, we're just going with the, the buyback. But the other one, uh, we're giving you a little more than what the guarantee is on it, so. And right now, we're looking at, um, September for delivery time. So it's pretty close to that.
Both those machines in Hazleton?
No, one of them went.
Okay, cause that, cause one of them's the joystick and the other one's the, uh, where you're writing to.
The two, the two, two thousand eighteen is a Van Proen.
Last time, wasn't, didn't we get an eight series? We got an eight series one too, didn't we?
Yeah, and that's why the, the last two times, actually, yeah. That's why the price difference on quote eight, or item A and quote item B, one's for a seven seventy-two and one's for an eight seventy-two. That's where your price differences are there.
About forty thousand dollars more.
Well, we were going with the bigger one before, weren't we? I mean, last.
Last time we put a bigger one.
Yeah, we went with the bigger one.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So we got the, the eight seventy-two, the bigger John Deere's in Braddock, I think, right?
I don't know, yeah.
And then the bigger, the bigger ones in Strasburg.
There's one on order that should be in March, April, and that's also an eight seventy-two. And then that last page, I have the buyback, so, um, the seven seventy-two is the top and then the eight seventy-two, so actually, your net cost is, is, you know, less than the forty thousand. And then I also included in there that premium circle, which is, uh, we've been selling a lot of that to municipalities and contractors. Especially those that have machine control, like the top gun on it and that, that's the only way to go. Cause you don't have to worry and it doesn't move up and down, nothing, there's no adjustment to it other than five thousand hours. You gotta change the oil, but that's it. And then I put on that buyback what the additional buyback would be with the, if you went with that premium circle.
Three thousand hours.
Yeah. Either, either machine, doesn't matter, so.
I don't, I don't think Cat had that, Cat didn't have that.
No.
No, that's, yeah, it's John Deere specific, so that. Think the bigger ones are worth it, Skylar? I mean, it seems like the little bit I've talked to the guys, I mean, it seems like the bigger machines, I mean, they like them.
Well, this kind of gives you a rough idea what, with the guaranteed buyback, but those other ones, I don't think, believe had a guaranteed buyback, so we can see in five years what they're really worth. I mean, always, yeah, I mean, they like it for snow removal and stuff like that, the little heavier machine, little more power behind them, but.
I know that's kind of what I had just released this winter here, and that is that the bigger machine just, just felt like they had more when they really hit stuff, you know, that sort of like. But then again, in the summer too, like on the road tops and stuff, I don't know if it's totally necessary or not, I mean, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, you're just grading roads in the summertime, unless you start rebuilding more roads and stuff like that, sometimes the bigger machines get down in the desert and move more dirt.
Sure. Well, it was, I guess my theory is, I don't know, we need to have the whole fleet going that way, you know, we already have three of them that size, you know.
How about resale and then down the road, seven seventy-two compared to the other, and you get more people wanting to buy them?
Yeah, mo- most of them, um, most of the contractors, um, bigger's better all the time for them guys. And really, fuel wise, unless you guys have noticed anything, they're just not.
Any difference?
No. I mean, it might, it may, an eight seventy-two may, when you're, if you're really hogging dirt or moving heavy snow, it's probably gonna burn more fuel, but just blade and road and that, there's, there just been no difference in them.
The length of the machine is no different.
What's that?
The length of the machine is no different?
No, physically, they're the same size as machines, yeah. It's just, it's just a heavier, the frame in the back is heavier, um, yeah, and then the more horsepower on it. But yeah, it's, they're physically the same size machine.
Bigger's always better?
Yeah, well, and, and I had talked to Skylar about this and they, you know, a lot of the contractors, like, these have seventeen-five tires, which they prefer, but even then, they kind of like to go to the bigger ones, but the problem is, um, municipality could not go to those big ones, cause they, they don't work on snow ice. They're just, they're too wide and they just slide all over, which, what the seventeen-fives and they're, uh, the Michelin snow plus, so they're, other than throwing rocks, they're really good for traction.
Well, that I've been hearing a lot too, they like the tires, that Michelin is a nice tire for.
Yeah. The Michelin makes one in Bridgestone, Scott Wonder, um, and they will keep it starting, just started making one, so, yeah, they're, they're really good on snow ice. And they're not bad on, in dirt too, so.
Okay, any other questions for Steve? All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks Steve, appreciate it.
Do you know if you guys are gonna decide today?
Uh, yeah, I would say so.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, within relative amount of time, I mean, if not today, you know, it might be something they wanna look into or something, but yeah, I would.
Cause the bid's good for what, thirty days, if that what it says?
Okay.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Thanks Steve. Who's your role?
Yeah, me, yeah, let's see, oh, yeah, there he is.
Five bucks in the jar.
That's it?
Twenty-five bucks in the jar. How you doing, Lo?
Very good, very good. We need to set this, but the missionaries, oh, for March. We'll look for it set up today.
Well, they can set up as of an hour ago, we were surprised as you.
All right.
Yeah, they brought the table in here, right around lunchtime, somewhere outside down.
Let me see. Hi Steve. Well, we'll go ahead and, uh, just go through a couple of things really quick that I'd like to present to you, if that's all right. Um, talking about the bid preparation and so forth, I guess what I was there apt to do in the, the bid preparation is both a one fifty model and a one sixty model, and just as a point of reference for everyone, the motor grader that you recently was purchased and delivered here before the end of the year was a one sixty all-wheel drive. The configuration is a complete copy of that one. What I'm holding here today is the exact same machines with a couple of little exceptions, uh, the exception primarily being that, uh, was requested to go to a six-valve configuration, which gives you two additional auxiliary valves to the front. If you ever wanted to put a different attachment, it's on left through, so if you look at the configuration, of the previous one, it was called base plus four, this is a base plus six. Other than that, uh, same machine, so. And then, of course, ordered it as a one fifty and then also ordered it as a one sixty. And, uh, all the drive machines. Got the snowing on there, itemized out a V plow, if you'd like to purchase additional one. Um, as far as the trade values, we did not survey these trades, uh, these trades are on a buyback to Arrio equipment. Assuming that you're going to utilize those buybacks, pretty strong buyback, you'll, uh, any questions for me?
The service agreement on, um, on these cats.
The service agreement is, it is all detailed in the spec, it is under warranty for the period of seven years and seventy-five hundred hours. And all the service travel is included in that, and in addition to that, there is a budgeted DPF filter replacement at five thousand hours that will be at cost above the machinery.
Anybody else got any other questions for Lowell?
This is your starting price or is this your bottom price?
This is my starting price.
Okay.
And then we add to that, if you wanna put the wing on it and the V plow, of course. That's. And then, uh, just, we, you know, another thing that was required is a seven-year buyback, that's a little transition, close something different than what you've done in the past, specifically with five-year buybacks, so we extended it out to the seven-year. And, uh, the last sheet there, just the differences in the model between the one fifty and one sixty, the difference in price and everything, so.
I assume your bid's good for thirty days too, right?
We can make this in for thirty days, yes.
So when was the availability?
Uh, it's documented on about the fourth page in, we're looking at the, about, if you were ordering, order, to order now, you'd be looking at February of next year at this point in time, so approximately one year. What we're looking at.
Okay, any other questions for Lowell?
Here, the ones that are existing machines will not be a negative against us on the question.
Well, you're, you're the ones that you have now are on the buyback and, uh, you, I believe that's a seventy-five hundred hour per shoulder, is that correct? So the ones that you don't go over that seventy-five hundred hours.
Um, well, the ones that obviously were given, that are traded in, the two John Deere's, we're arguing for buyback, so that's, price is set, so it's been a year out versus hour out, so, um, that being said, I guess, what's the Lowell, they're due up in October, your machines aren't gonna be here till February.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they, well, if we decide to go with Butler machinery, will they supply us at late, by the time you?
For the short term, if that's what we need to do, I guess that's what we need to do.
We'd be looking at four, five months, maybe, you know, October, November.
October, November, December, yeah, probably after four months, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do have another question for Lowell.
Yep.
After, well, it doesn't begin with this bid.
Okay, well, there's no more questions for the bid. And I guess you're free to go on that, but then Skylar's got a question for you.
We have two machines that are coming up to one warranty.
Okay.
One's gonna inquire here at Pedori, if we don't extend that warranty now and it runs out, we can't add that warranty later, correct? We have to add it while there's still warranty on the machines there.
Well, I'd have to see what the terms are, is it the original warranty that came with the machine or is it one of the machines that we've already extended warranty on?
I believe it's one that's factory warranty, where it's gonna, they're gonna be extending it.
Right, so you can, you can extend it and I have to quote it?
Well, you already quoted it and everything like that, so. I just wanted to know if we need to make that decision exactly today, because that one's gonna run out in, uh, the end of the month, the twentieth, the month that expires.
Okay, so yes, you want to act on it before the end of.
Before the, before factory, where do you, where's the case?
That's what I needed to know. Yep. So that's the only question, good luck with discussing that.
How long do you give warranty? Do you give for half a year or does it gotta be a year?
Well, it's.
I think there's several options, yeah, you could go up to.
So you could, it all varies based upon the request of the customer.
Okay.
So what I offer Skylar here is, uh, there's, yeah. Six different options here, twelve months, twenty-four months, thirty-six months, and then within those time frames, it's an additional thousand hours, fifteen hundred hours, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five. Okay. They're all, these are the warranties that were brought forth during that special meeting, so.
So is that your bottom line, Lowell, on those, on these?
Yes. I did the best I can.
This is regardless of premium product, there, I'm sure John Deere's less. I'm sure I wanna be business with you guys.
Um, one question would be, rather than extending the warranties, or no, even if we extend those warranties or any of those machines, would it be better to keep one of these machines and trade one of them or something too? Would that be, are these the two you wanna move on them?
Well, these two have the guaranteed buyback, cause it's pretty tough to walk away from, I hear.
So that, I mean, that was the main reason why you brought them up then.
Yep, because we went back and we can discuss this.
Sure.
Later or whatever, but that's the reason we moved forward with these two, that we went back and looked and these two are coming up in October. And again, with everything taking longer, we had to move forward.
Well, that makes sense, cause like you said, even now with these machines going on on warranty, you're gonna have to purchase at least a year warranty probably until we get another machine and then so.
Correct.
Either way, you're probably purchasing a warranty.
Correct.
No matter what.
That's what we wanna go.
Well, right, I mean, that's either that or run without a warranty, cause we don't have a machine coming to replace those, or is that John Deere that's on the way?
No, that's replacing one that we did back in June.
So yeah, so where are you gonna run without a warranty? You're basically, by purchase, this extended.
Machine, figure out what we're gonna.
All right, no, that's fine, but it seems like we're always dealing on blades, so it's hard to keep them together, so.
Yeah, it used to be easy when it was a couple of months out, yeah.
Yeah, how you deal.
Almost a year old, so yeah. The one that you just purchased or agreed on, six months, or a year, hasn't shown up.
Okay, are there any other questions for Lowell? Any questions for us though?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
You're free to go then.
Okay, all right, thank you everyone.
Thanks for coming in Lowell.
Good to see everyone.
Yeah, you too.
Well, I guess we'll just kind of continue on with the warranty then, so we have two, we have machines that are gonna, one's due up in, uh, March and one's due up in April here for warranty, so we either we either purchase warranty and then you determine how long you wanna run that warranty or we run without any warranty, so. Either way, if we're gonna purchase warranty, even if you decide at this meeting, you wanted to give us bids on these two blades, we should probably extend warranty.
Right, I would say we probably, I mean, when are they due to be replaced then, or what? What year, what year are these machines?
Uh, these are.
Cause if they're factory warranty, yeah, so yeah.
So they're the same years that.
Five years old.
Well, there's two machines set idle, correct? Even with the new guy on board in Aspen, could these two machines set idle?
Well, we're planning on hiring more people, so.
Okay.
That's, that's our goal, so.
Should we just take warranty on one?
They're all being warranted, so.
They don't want to say.
So I, I don't know if you guys kept your warranty sheets from last meeting.
Yep.
The prices are there, so. Um, I don't know, the hour, hour really makes a huge difference. It's just the terms, twelve months or twenty-four months or thirty-six, cause the, if, they give you an option of twelve months or a thousand hours, or twelve months or fifteen hundred hours. Same with twenty-four months, two thousand. They just add five hundred extra hours to their warranty specs, so, but then you can see the price. This is kind of happens when you keep extended warranties, you notice, you push everything together at one year and now this year, we're possibly, we're getting rid of four blades.
Well, the one thing, I mean, I guess I feel with the extended warranties, it gives us a lot of options. I mean, you have a, let's just say you have a two-year extended warranty, all of a sudden, I mean, what if machinery really does get harder to get rather than easier, at least you have the extended warranty if you wanna wait it out too or something, I just, you know, if you're always up against the gun, only doing like a one-year warranty or something. Cause even if you traded in with the extended warranty, I'd imagine that's probably transferable. Since it's from Butler on the machine, so when you talk about even your resale value, there's probably some value to be regained there too, so you're really just getting a one-year warranty, then all of a sudden, it's like, oh no, machines are two years out now or something, and you're going, crap, now we got this machine with a lot of warranties, I don't know if you can, I, you might be able to extend it again, but I think they kind of frown upon wanting to keep extending them all the time, so you're, you're probably better off going with like a two-year, you can probably capture some of that back in a trade-in. And at least you have that option if you decide you don't wanna upgrade a machine that year. That's kind of the way, I feel like a one-year's kind of a Band-Aid, I feel like that way, I mean, I would imagine if Lowell knows there's thirteen months left on a extended warranty on a machine that he quoted and knows about, we'd probably get that back.
Probably.
That's kind of the way I feel about it, if you're gonna extend it, extend it long enough to give yourself some options.
Well, and that one sixty motor grader we just got, that was fourteen months actually to get it, from the time we bid it to the time we was on the, at, in Lincoln, so.
So even if you would quote to trade these in a year from now, you're looking at possibly over two years to get them replaced really. Which you can probably ride it out at the end there, the last three, four months and use them as the spares and park them to be sure or something, but there's a pretty good chance you're not even replacing these machines in a year if they were the next ones up. In the meantime, you hate to have machines idle just because you feel like you're afraid to use them, so you're gonna go through the extended warranty process.
And then this extended warranty money would come out of our new equipment purchase funds, so.
That's cheaper than new equipment though, too.
Correct. That budget is one of the ones that got cut, so just, so everybody's aware of that.
Well, I mean, even right now, I mean, we're talking about trading in five-year-old machines, not fifteen-year-old machines, so I mean, we got pretty good fleet, so I feel like we're still in pretty good shape, so. Feel like once you get to the point where we're at, where we're trading in pretty nice machines, you can risk it a little bit by running them a little longer, I mean, even these extended warranties, I mean, part of the reason we started doing that too is not so much to save money, but we felt like we were trading in machines that weren't even that used up some years, cause if you go through a light winter or two, I mean, this year's a winter, you're putting hours on a machine, but you go through some of them winters where they're not getting used as hard. Now you're trading in five-year machines with thirty-six hundred hours on them, well, I mean, there's a lot of life left in them, I feel like the extended warranty, trying to capture some more value, cause even Lowell himself and, and these guys, when they were selling the extended warranties, were telling us that you're not gonna have a ton of depreciation in that like thirty-five hundred to five thousand window, you're, you're really, you're capturing that value of utilizing them rather than just trading them off, so. Not saying we should always extend warranties, but some of these machines, if they're on lighter on the hours, I don't really have a problem with that. Using them up rather than upgrading them all the time. I wanna keep a nice, good fleet, but there's also some pretty good machines out there that, they're five years old, but they're, they're in pretty good shape, I feel like we do a good job of keeping them clean and, so.
You're right, we could obviously absolutely do that, but now if you extend this one out three years, now your next warranty's coming to do on these and you can't extend them again, and now you got machines that could have a lot of hours on it, so now you're up against that wall again.
Well, so I mean, it's, it's.
Pushing these into the next group.
You can go too far, right, so. Um, we got two machines that are coming up on warranty, right?
Correct.
I feel like extending warranty two years really isn't gonna hurt us, cause we're either gonna use them or we're gonna trade them off with extended warranty on them, I don't. So I guess I would, I would be in favor of two years, just so that we have plenty of time.
I'm gonna go along with that too.
So extending it two years and then probably coming back at the first of the year or something like that and bidding them out, cause that will, that'll give us some runway.
That, I mean, that would probably be, make the most sense would be to bid them out next and try and get out of the extended warranties or at least keep to a minimum, so we only have maybe one machine that we're stretching out and not three or something, so like you said, you're not going into a bind. Now you got four machines in one year that are coming up in a three-month window or something, so. Yeah, I'd say those would probably be the next machines marked for trade here.
So do you wanna do the twenty-four month, two thousand hour or twenty-four month, twenty-five hundred?
Well.
Cause it jumps from seventeen thousand, seven hundred to twenty-two thousand, four eighty.
How many hours do you think you put in a year?
Varies.
About a thousand.
If you have a late winter, you don't put a lot of hours on it, but.
I mean.
I, I think the average they call is about a thousand hours.
I'd say a thousand's pretty fair.
Probably pretty average, is about a thousand hours.
I would say go to the two-year, two thousand hours.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
It's a little cheaper, the two-year, and just, I think, I think we'd be able to manage them kind of hours, and with the newer machines coming in too, we'll just have to make sure.
And then with the, I guess, the, one with the higher hours, the two-year, two thousand hours, nineteen thousand. It's seventeen thousand, cause one's got six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five, that's a little more than that, since we're taking one month ago, and then one, other one's got five thousand, two hundred and three hours on it.
Well, I feel like if you bid them out here in the next couple of months then, and we have to use them for another year, then they're probably, I mean, that's, if you put six, seven thousand hours on the machine, that's probably enough, so. I mean, I just know when we were trading in thirty-eight hundred hour machines for a while, it kind of felt like we could be utilizing them some more, but yeah, now you said, now we're getting into the higher hour, so. I would say, I would say go with the two-year, two thousand hour on those and then mark them next to be the next to, to trade off. And then see where the window is, you know, like you said, if you're out sixteen months, then at least you got some time.
So come back and re-bid them in October, November?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, cause it takes about a year.
They got to go to yesterday on those two machines. They don't? Not at all.
No, we just, I mean, thank God there was warranty on, um, the unit.
They're both deer.
Uh.
Cats.
Whatever they, are they, uh?
The unit two seven two is the last serial, serial number.
And they both, they're both cats?
Yep. Uh, one of them was pushing, something to do with the diesel exhaust, the EGR cooler or something like that, pushing atmospheres in the cylinder ones.
And what was it there?
What's that?
What was it, what did you have to do to resolve?
Uh, they just replaced it, they had to, okay, replace it, flush the system and everything like that. Uh, they just replaced it, they had to, um, replace it, flush the system and everything like that, it kind of hydrolocked when they would start it.
Okay.
How have they been with the warranty, has it been good, have they been?
Like the service part of it, or?
The serve, is that the, paying for the stuff?
Oh, pretty good, I mean, the warranty, so we, these were bid a little different, so we, we're paying mileage on this, but the new stuff is all included in mileage and not included, so. And I would, I would assume that the extended warranty would kind of be the same, they're not gonna pay for the mileage, you're gonna still pay for mileage, so.
Because there for a while, a couple of years back, I thought every month was three thousand dollar bill, you remember that one?
They had a lot more cats seven years ago too, though.
Huh?
They had a lot more cats that kind too, though.
I know.
Bill's gonna get smaller, we only got two or three of them versus five, so.
But still, every month, we know they were supposed to have warranty on them, old bill.
Yeah.
Three thousand dollars.
So I think we'll do the extended warranty on that, two years, two thousand hours on that, just, and then like you said, mark them for the next.
Two and two.
Yeah.
Mark them for, for October?
Yep.
Do you have one more on already? That's good.
So I'm making a motion?
I'll make one.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to extend the two blades for two years, two thousand hours. Is there a second?
Absolutely.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next in your packet will be, we'll talk about gravel crushing. The final report from them.
A green folder at the bottom.
Page two is a picture of, oh, they shot the pile and everything like that. And the third page, kind of power.
The folder's got your paper.
Oh, they measured everything, took a breakdown. And then the door all the way out is a hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-seven yards left there.
So are they done there now?
Correct, they are done.
I mean, is it empty?
Nope, I talked to Fisher Industries, they figure there's roughly twenty to thirty thousand more yards left in there. So they kind of stopped here figuring that, there's still enough to come back and crush, or a small crusher, small crushing operation come in there and crack it. There's at least enough volume for them to make it worthy to come back and crush it, so.
But they're not gonna stay with that bolt that we got for us?
Probably not. So, I mean, essentially it's between Mr. Woolbaum and Fisher, you know, they, they kind of made that agreement that, we were just purchasing the gravel.
So they move out?
Correct.
You gonna have old engineering measure this file?
I talked with Fisher Industries and they've, um, we discussed having a second report done, um, we didn't really feel it necessary because the numbers, they're just, they're usually so close that they're doing it under their contract. And then the tons and stuff like that's there and everything like that, we sure can if you guys would like to do it, but.
I guess, I think just for the sake of making sure that everything's on the up and up, I feel like we should have it double-checked, just, I mean.
Cause we've, like, like I said, we discussed it and they've had, to where some of the surveying crews have, have called down actually and said, how did you get this number later? What was your number if we can just get a look through it? So, that's why I'm shy away from having it. I mean, Fisher Industries is not a fly-by-night operator, maybe.
Oh, yeah, right, I, not that I don't trust them, it's just that, you know, for this due diligence, I guess, I, I, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with it getting surveyed again just to make damn sure that this correlates, cause. I just think.
Nothing wrong at all with it.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Hey, we'll, we'll do that, and then do you want to take that out of the engineering budget then, have we surveyed?
Well, we'll pay for it somehow with that, but I think it's proper to do our due diligence, so I'm not, I'm not too concerned about that, I think that's just, with this amount of volume and the amount of money that's involved, a little bit more just to double-check it, in my mind, is well worth it, so.
Okay, we'll double-check it.
Okay. Like I said, I'm, I don't have no doubts about it, but I think it'd just be right to have another piece of paper from somebody else, I've just,
Do a visit.
Taken someone else's word for it, whether that's the right way or wrong, which is probably not the right way to do it, so.
Okay, we will.
If Fisher's offended, my apologies, it's no offense.
Okay, no, I.
I mean, it looks like what they did here is nice, I mean, I'm not sure they did a nice job, but I'd feel a lot more comfortable. Same way as you guys, disagree?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Cause what's to stop it if Ken owns the gravel? There's nothing to stop him to sell it to somebody else, I mean, he's, he's been good to us, but.
Yeah, well, I just, we should just ask, so we know how much is there, I guess, it's just the right thing, I'd, it'd be great if it just double-checks within one percent or half percent that we know it's good. Okay.
Okay, we know.
Next thing?
So, we did all that extensive work to the Hazelton shop up there?
Yeah.
The last thing we have is the garage door, we all knew it was coming.
Mm-hmm.
So in your packet, there should be a quote from Midwest Doors for eleven thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars. And we're asking for that to come out of the ARCA fund.
Concerns?
Why are you asking typically ARCA funds, or should we?
Well, because we were utilizing that for property improvements like that, cause I think we took the, we took the improvements of the actual shop out of the ARCA funds too, so. Rather than taking out the budget, once we had that money, so. I know the work that we did at Hazelton turned out great. Compliment you guys, I wanted to go all the way, instead we just wanted to do one or two walls, that was the right way to do it, that turned out, I mean, and even with all of it said and done, and you pencil all these numbers together, we never would have built a shop for that. You know, and acquired the property and everything, so we're still, still a pretty good investment, that's a heck of a nice piece of property now that, serves a lot, I mean, we got two blades parked in there, we got cold storage stuff in there, I mean, it's, it really is, it's, it saved us a lot, we were deadheading that blade twice a day, I mean, so.
Is this price still good? Yeah, this was just for the, you know, the short.
Yeah, I mean, that door's probably thirty-seven years old too, and.
Yeah.
Just the rest of the building.
Then don't value it in the best insulated either.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Hell. Yeah?
So is that the door on the south side?
Yeah, the overhead door.
Yeah, the, there's only one, yeah, like there's those sliding doors on the.
Yeah.
Can they, can they put more windows in there?
Yeah, we could, I guess. Put them up high enough.
Well, I, I mean, the more windows, the more light you get in the.
I think there.
Winter time.
There'll be three windows in there.
Two or two.
Doesn't know I'm like a.
Oh, two, okay, two.
Windows on, I wish I would have known a little tighter, there's a lot more light in there, you know.
That shop's got a pretty good lighting.
So, then it's a bit more.
Tell you what, that white metal on the inside, then fluorescent lights. It's bright now. It's bright already, so.
There's three windows in there already up high?
No, they're above high level.
Yeah, they're.
Are there two or three in there?
I think there's three.
I think there's three, but there's.
Smaller, where these, these are, I mean, twenty-four inch by twelve, they're just pretty good sized windows.
Okay.
And they're, they're all.
Blade over this, the side blade show it, so pretty boggey, I guess.
No, I mean.
Well, they, they could, but it's a glass and a panel.
We could.
I don't know.
I'm not a huge fan of a lot of windows, because you build a shop to get it out of the elements, and even with that stuff shined in there, but. I'll do, we can add more windows if you'd like.
Um, just, Marlis, if we approve this door for the ARCA funds, that's, we just have to vote on it basically, right?
Yeah.
But we can do it, Ken.
Three windows up high.
So I guess with that, I would entertain a motion to approve table or deny this for uh, door replacement to Hazelton shop with the use of ARCA funds.
I'd make a motion to do it with three windows up high. Versus just five foot height or six foot height, up in the next panel.
Put a bucket, put it on the next panel? Okay, we have a motion to approve the purchase of the door, purchase and installation of a door, Midwest Doors at the Hazelton shop using ARCA funds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Request approved.
Thank you, so the only other thing on that building will be eventually will be the court there for rain gun, it's on there.
Yeah.
They're hanging. They're pretty, they're not even cheap. And they're right over the, over the walk-in door and the.
Yeah, and south side, the ice is just over the years, just slowly takes a chunk or two out of them, and they've been re-screwed up and they're bent out, but.
Not a priority.
Right, but at some point, that's probably gonna need to happen, but that's just general maintenance, that stuff. The door'd be a big deal, so. Okay.
Hey, and I think the last item pretty much in the packet will be, adding a clothing allowance to the door department's policy. This will be through safety wear, shirts like this, boots, pam, we won't pay for like regular t-shirts or anything like that, if the shirts have your reflectivity on them, or coats, stuff like that, so.
Do you get this from another county or something, or?
Yeah, it's another county that has this.
Okay.
How many guys did you talk to about?
Depending on what we do for, we can play ten to, ten to eleven?
Did anything like that at Ken? Here.
Uh?
Did anything like that at Ken?
Yeah, we did.
So, I know like when I worked at Falkirk too, they had a, basically had a clothing lounge, this is a little bit different than this, but there was a.
It says, when you first start, that's the initial start, but after that, then it's like, you know, like one here or there.
Right, you're, even the same with us, like when I worked at Falkirk, they, they made you buy the reflective t-shirts, but they sold them really cheap, like you paid like five dollars a piece, but that was, I mean, you, if you were the bottom, you're only probably ten bucks, twenty bucks a piece. And then, like you said, you maybe bought ten your first year, and then after that, you maybe bought two a year, or, or, you know, even like with boots or anything, you were buying one set of boots every two years, and maybe one pair a year, so it's not like it's a huge cost, but the, they were telling you, you needed steel toe boots, you needed reflective clothes, you know, and so, to soften the blow of telling you you need to wear that, they offered you an opportunity to reimburse you, which, which was huge, cause I think I would have been upset if they'd have been like, hey, you gotta wear these clothes and, and you gotta buy them all too, I mean, even my business, I supply shirts to my guys and, you know, it's kind of a commonplace thing, I think it'd be a good program, cause they would encourage these guys to wear a lot more reflective stuff, which I think they should be wearing, I mean, like what Skyler's got on there should be, commonplace stuff and, you know, that encourages, you know, proper work gear, so.
And you're not talking board, I mean.
No, it's not like it's a huge cost, I mean, you're talking, yeah, and, a lot of these guys probably won't even burn up that two hundred and fifty dollars a year, I mean, their first year it might be a little, but after that, it's gonna just be replacement costs and some of this stuff, it won't be a big deal, but, and if you have a, proper channel, like you said, it's gotta be approved, like, so you're purchasing the stuff that we want them wearing. I think that's a good, I think that'd be a good program.
Yeah, so like the receipt will either have to say it's reflectivity or whatever like that, or they have to bring it in and show us that that's what they.
Right.
Purchased it, so they're not going out and purchasing just, right, dark clothes, whatever, it's.
Buying dark bricks t-shirts with them and stuff.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So what are they, a lot of them wear reflective stuff now?
A lot of them were just safety vests, which worked, but they hang up and catch up to. You know, then you're putting the safety vest over another coat and everything like that, so.
No, I don't think we really, I mean, we really don't have any kind of address code, and we don't, I mean, there is some requirements, like I know when you're out of your blade, a lot of the guys have the safety vests at least in the blade, and they wear them when they get out and stuff, I mean, there's some, like OSHA type requirements, we, we are following, and.
That's right.
I know Skyler's brought a lot of that in too, cause he's experienced with that, and, I just think adding on to that by having a little bit more of a expectation of what they should wear at work, and then providing an opportunity to kind of, ease some of that cost, I think is a good program.
Actually, people will come dress better.
Right, I think if you had everybody coming in orange or reflective, I think it, it just represents everything better, it's safety minded, it's, I mean.
Are they required to wear steel toe?
Steel toe, I don't think so.
Are you?
We haven't made a policy, there's not been a policy.
We didn't even have that, Ken.
Should we have a policy on that?
Should we wear flip flops?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I think that's up to the superintendent, if you own flip flops, he might send you home, I would hope so for God's sake.
And I mean, that day's, that day's probably coming.
Yeah.
You know, where we have to start making a policy, because, work with golf and stuff and that is not getting any cheaper, like we, at that conference I attended last week in Minot, they were talking about that, it's slip trips and falls are your biggest, things like that, so.
I'm surprised they haven't enforced that yet.
Big steps. Big steps, you gotta just.
Steel toes in the winter time.
I know, I.
When we, when I was talking, we were doing a lot of reflectivity stuff.
Yeah. No, and I know we've gotten, I know that one year we got a grant with some coats.
Yeah.
But I felt like even just with everybody wearing the coats and just, as far as just the look, it looks like we're trying, we're doing the safety thing, these guys are out along the roads, they should be in reflective gear, I mean, I know with my business, like you said, especially in the summer, we went to all reflective t-shirts, I mean, I mean, you look good coming in, showing up as a group, everybody looks organized, they're safety minded, it's, I think it's the right way to do it too, so. So yeah, I think.
And if they don't use it, they don't get it, they just lose it.
Right, we don't cut them a check at the end of the year. And it doesn't roll over, it just.
Yeah, just once a year.
Then it'll roll over, yeah.
Use thirty dollars out of it all year, that's all you got, I think.
So you're gonna handle it in the road department, right, like you're not adding anything to like Marcy, other than just cutting a check or something, but.
Yeah, and we, we'll handle everything, it'll be just like a vote, cause I think, we have worked on that.
You're handling enforcement of it and all, and that's done in your department, okay? Well, is this something, are we gonna like add this to the board and handle it then? Suppose we should probably make a motion to at least approve it. I mean, we should at, we should at least approve it at this point.
Yeah.
So. Okay, I guess a motion to approve.
We're going to go ahead with the two fifty.
Okay.
That's right.
And, yeah, so we got a motion and a second to approve the uh, personal protective equipment policy. Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
No.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Is this going back to February first?
Um. Yeah.
I don't know, I need to work for what this year?
Play it over back now or maybe, I suppose it'd be there.
Well, we're starting a new year.
You want it to be back to like right now, today?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it might as well, it's, it's not like it's a huge cost increase, so it's not, not very fair enough, and so. Okay. Um. Did we bring on another employee? Are you, for the road department, did you make an offer at least, or?
Other than the one that started.
Right, well, we got the one that started in Hazelton.
Uh, I did offer a job to a guy, he's got a few things he wants to try to take care of quick before he accepts it, so. So I actually talked to him this morning, and he told me I need to make a decision. Obviously, we had another employee quit last week, took a different job, so if this guy does, accept the job, then we'll just be back to regular staff, so I just have, uh, Marlis repost that job opening, so we can see if we can get some more applicants.
Okay.
Sean resigned.
Yeah, correct.
So, with the other new guys, they pretty good so far?
Seems to be working out pretty good.
He works out of the Hazelton spot, right?
Yeah.
There's a Hazelton.
Yeah. I mean, he's not there all the time, I'm like, the other day he was going to the limb shop, helping us work and stuff like that, so. They were up there today doing a few more things up there, and then coming back down here to work. Yeah, we offered a job to another, another person, so.
Just waiting to hear back then, you're gonna give him a little time, or? Just waiting to hear back, then you give him a little time, or?
Yeah, I gave him a hard deadline of March sixth, like that would be his start date, so he needs to...
Okay.
Get his stuff done, and I told him, oh, roughly two weeks, you know, to do the background check and stuff like that.
So really, he's got about a week or two to give you an answer, and then after that, we're...
Yeah, then if not, we're gonna see what happens with the next round of applicants if we...
Right.
That was the whole plan, is to bring on an additional person, correct? That's what we...
Right, well, that's the decision we had made before, was to even have an extra guy, you know, I mean, not an extra guy, but an additional guy on top of what we had, because we were shorthanded, so... Okay?
Okay. So the other thing I wanna address again, to bring back up, is overtime, you know, last, one of the last meetings, I addressed paying overtime for any hours, any additional hours they work during the day, so instead of getting the forty, they, you know, if they work eleven hours on Monday, they get that hour overtime, or Sunday, or Saturdays, or they take vacation during the week, they can still, if they get called in on Friday, on Saturday, they get paid their overtime. It's not adding anything more to the budget, it's just changing the way we pay our overtime home. And with these tough times, talking to different counties, they're, everybody's hurting for help, so if we don't wanna offer more money, we have to have a different incentive, and this is an incentive that isn't really gonna cost us anymore. It's not like we're gonna pay them more overtime hours, it's just... so I had the state's attorney kind of look into it a little bit, whether we're breaking any laws or not, so we'll ask his opinion on that.
Are we breaking any laws, Mr. State's attorney?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the Fair Labor Standards Act basically sets the bare minimums of what's required, so once you reach forty hours, you have to start paying overtime, and the overtime has to be at least time and a half. You can always pay more, you can do an incentive structure, you can pay more, you could, you could do double time for overtime, come up with all kinds of things. It's just that bare minimum of a, for non-exempt employees, once they reach forty hours, it has to be at least time and a half. If you wanna set up a different structure, so that you incentivize employees that are working, you know, Sundays, holidays, time, you know, in the evenings where they're not, you know, typically required to be there, you can certainly do that.
Well, I just think one way that would probably alleviate it would be if we began the work week on Monday instead of Sunday, because a lot of times, if you go out on Sunday, that's the beginning of the week, so you're not getting paid overtime on that.
I think, yeah.
I mean, if you just made a change like that, that would probably alleviate a lot of the questions you're really talking about. I mean, there's, I mean, some of the days where the guys are going out, and they're, they're working an eleven-hour day or something like that, if you do that continuously, you're already on overtime by like Wednesday anyway. You know, so a lot of times during the week, if you're working long days, or you work long days Monday and Tuesday, hopefully you're coming out of whatever it is you're coming out of, and Thursday and Friday, you can meter back a little bit to, you know, either give them time off, or they're collecting overtime on it. But the big thing is probably like going out on a Sunday is straight time, which is a bother. I mean, that's just kinda, I've always felt that way. I mean, if you're going out on Sunday, you should really, I get a little...
You can be dope, I mean...
Well, I mean, at least if you were starting to regulate it, so that you consider Sunday the last day of the week instead of the first week, then if you're going out on a Sunday, the incentive is you're getting overtime on it, and that's, that's a relatively easy change, if you were gonna do something like that, without just crafting a different policy you're starting. I, I think during the week, if you have someone putting in a twelve-hour day, I, I mean, there's lots of times, I mean, you're gonna be paying overtime for all these, like an extra hour here, an extra hour there, and, I mean, like I don't do that as a business owner. I mean, I just, towards the end of the week, you either start queuing overtime, or guys start meeting off hours, like, hey, we worked hard Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, get out of here two o'clock on Thursday or something. If they wanna stay longer, then they get overtime, if they don't, then they go home, or, you know, and that's, I feel like that's a way to manage the schedule a little bit better too, and then I think if you just start Monday as the first day of the week, then at least Sunday you're queuing overtime.
Well, yes, that's probably a good idea, you know, set schedule and a set standard workload. But let's say an employee takes vacation one day, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then you get a storm Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so now that guy's working Saturday without any overtime.
Right, but he got vacation earlier in the week. I mean, we can't, I mean, I know, but I, I mean, now we're talking about getting vacation and overtime, even if they're not working over the forty. I mean, I don't, I don't, I've never worked a job where vacation's ever credited towards overtime. I mean, even then, usually it was like if you had a, if you worked twenty hours, and you took twenty hours of vacation, and then you ended up working a Friday or Saturday, you got fifty hours of straight time, or forty-eight of straight time, and then if you went over like, you know, if you worked forty hours plus took your vacation, then yeah, then anything over that forty hours would be vaca, or overtime, but, I mean, in that sense, I mean, I think you just gotta honor the forty-hour work week, but just start it as Monday, and then you can give that Sunday for credit, but, I mean, if somebody takes vacation on Tuesday, and then works Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday or something, I mean, that vacation can't count towards overtime, I just don't...
Well, no way.
It won't count towards overtime, it's just if they have to work, you know, on their Saturday. It really affects the Saturdays, is what it's really gonna come down to, so...
Right, but I mean, I don't, I mean, at the same time, if they took off a day or two during work that week, then you're basically saying, if they worked Monday and Tuesday, then they took Wednesday and Thursday off, and you're working four-ten, so you gave them twenty hours of vacation for Wednesday and Thursday, then they come in on Friday, you want them to be getting paid over their forty already after that?
Not Friday, Saturday.
So you'd wanna consider the weekends overtime no matter what? That's kind of what you're arguing, okay?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know what that...
Oh, I see, yeah, I see what you're getting at. Instead of working the forty hour, you're just saying Saturday, they work Saturday, it's overtime.
Then Sunday is overtime, automatic.
I see what you're getting at.
Well, yeah, that would be different than that. I see what you're saying with that, I guess.
Because we have to, I mean, things aren't getting easier. I mean, five years ago, when you had a job opening, you had a stack of applicants, ten, fifteen, twenty people. Last job opening, we had five. Every county's running into this, so we have to start thinking of different ways to make it, different incentives to state, or come be employed at Evans County. Because our, our major really isn't there, so, I mean, with a lot of counties like that too, so, I mean, a lot of counties I talked to at these conferences, they run into the same problem. We need to be pioneers, or forward thinkers on this, not always trying to play catch up. And we're not really adding anything to the budget, the hours or the money's not gonna change that much, it's just when they get their overtime. Because a lot of guys don't wanna take their vacation, because they're, they'll miss out on that Friday overtime, so they try to work it into work weeks of where you have a holiday or something like that, and then...
Well, the place you really run in, in the winter time, when it's, all of a sudden it snows on a weekend, and, you know, you sit there and try to find people that come to work on Saturday or Sunday.
Right, but I mean, the other thing too, is I don't wanna de-incentivize vacation. I mean, vacation's to get out of here too, though. I mean, I don't, I mean...
Oh, it could, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know, but why I don't wanna take vacations, I don't wanna miss overtime. Well, that vacation's not offered to be like a bonus, it's meant for you to get out of here, clear your head, and even if you're not sick of being at work, maybe other people are sick of you being at work, so, you know, I mean, we wanna incentivize people using their vacation and getting out of here too, and I don't, I don't know, I feel like an easy fix to a lot of this would be just probably start the work week on Monday, because that would at least solve a Sunday issue nine times out of ten. And then I suppose Saturday would maybe be a little bit different if someone took vacation that week, but if you didn't, then you'd be on overtime by Friday or Saturday anyway, you know, if it's the kind of stretch we're talking about, so, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I think we could probably still evaluate it, I mean, I, I see what you're saying. I think that's something we could probably...
I know some places, they work eight hours, and that day, they work more than eight hours, they get the overtime.
Time and a half.
Yeah.
Just two hours work, and we...
And, you know, the weekend, everything was overtime, and Sunday was actually double, but yeah.
Oh, we can go to double time.
And then go trouble.
We need to make an offer, then pull it right back.
I didn't say it's tough, but...
Well, I mean, you gotta just be aware too, because there's other departments that play with some of this stuff too. I mean, we don't wanna, I mean, just the road part, right? I mean, we have to evaluate the situation countywide too, because there's other departments that have different working scenarios too.
But they sure can come up here and...
Right, but I'm just saying, as a commission too, it's not like we could just be like, Ken, that's a great idea, let's do it, and then next month we have another department, and now it might not be a huge budget increase for you, but for three departments, it could be a huge budget increase in total, so we gotta make sure if we're gonna make these decisions that we're, you know, I understand where you're coming from, I don't really have a problem with you bringing it up, and I think there's probably something we could craft to, I agree with you, you gotta make probably just a little more incentives in this day's work environment, because no different than any of the departments, it's tough to recruit people. It is, it's getting tougher all the time, so, so I would disagree with any of that, but we just gotta make sure the decision we make is something that we don't just jump too fast on.
So is this commission okay if, at the head meeting, we meet with all the other department heads, and you've kind of tried to hash out what works best for everybody, and then have one come forward, like, like a committee?
I think I would encourage that, I guess, because...
Because that's the one thing I noticed here, we don't really do with a lot of department head meetings, and, you know, we'll discuss our policies, the policy gets put in place, and then it just stays like that forever, until someone comes up and...
I think it'd be a lot easier for us as a commission, knowing there's several of you speaking through one person, rather than every department coming in and...
Right.
Renegotiating their own work schedules and pay scales, so I think, yeah, I think that would probably be very beneficial. Sounds good, you got a new job.
Cool. So, yeah, I guess we'll try to get a, have it with the department heads and see if they wanna, if they wanna be part of it, but if they don't wanna be part of it, then we're gonna...
Well, I think a part of that department head discussion too, should maybe be evaluating your guys' schedules, like we talked about the courthouse too, and making sure that everybody's on the same page with what each department's working and stuff. I mean, those kinds of decisions coming from you guys, then through us, way, was way better than us managing every department individually, so, there we go. Sounds like a plan.
So is that snow pushing all done?
Right. That'll turn out.
Pretty good.
Yes, we're totally...
Yeah, it'll be in the bills, so...
Okay, it's in the bills?
Yeah.
Cool.
Stay here if you want, if you have a question about it.
Yeah.
All right, I think I have much more to go.
Okay. Any questions for Skylar?
There's, uh, you got the utility permit for kind of like...
Oh.
Okay?
Yeah.
I heard it's right there.
I'll try to follow you.
I gotta ask something. I wasn't part of it, Skylar here. What was the requirement that you were there as far as moving down here to the county of Evans County in Burley? And the reason I ask, because I'm asked by the general, and the people wanted to know. What was the board's decision?
Eventually moved down here.
Eventually, or what was the purpose of the case?
Well, there was no really set timeframe, and we discussed timeframes, but, timeframes trying for everybody. I don't know if the general public doesn't take a pull my weight in this county, or what.
I'm in the shade.
Well, you said you talked to the general public, talking, just what do they say?
They just tried to leave down here?
Yeah. And they, partly my commitment to Evans County, like, we're putting in a lot of hours and a lot of, gone next to miles.
Well, I think, I mean, when we discussed it, I mean, that was a part of the probation process, was that we were gonna keep him on probation till he moved down here, while he said he had a rental agreement in place, and, I mean, I'm not gonna go through and micromanage whether or not it's in place, if he says he's got one, I mean, I guess at this point, I don't, he was on probation long enough for me to see that he was willing to make the commitments. I mean, the guy slept in the Hazelton shop, I mean, he's got hotel rooms every time we did him do. The fear that we had of someone delegating from Bismarck and not coming down here really hasn't happened, and so in that respect, I think he proved himself that he's committed to Evans County at this point, as committed as anybody else that's had the position for the most part, so I, that's basically why he came off probation too. If he's renting a place and staying down here one or two nights a week, I don't know if he's either, as long as he's fulfilling his duties, and if he's not fulfilling his duties, it'll become relatively obvious, and then we deal with accordingly, either put him on probation, or it becomes a real issue, he'd be terminated if that was the case, but I, I haven't seen anything out of him, other than, you know, somebody that's ran the department fairly well, you know, everybody makes mistakes, I don't think any of them have been huge enough to make a big difference, I mean, and I think he's done a good job, so, and as someone that was a part of that process earlier, that was the main reason for restricting his pay, keeping him on probation longer than usual, was basically, I mean, he could move down to Evans County and be not that great of an employee, or he could stay down here occasionally, still live in Bismarck and do a good job, I guess I would rather have the latter than the former, so...
You said you had a place too, didn't you, Skylar?
Yeah, I just, I just really just have to finish the paperwork on it quickly, and that's just, not the major, so...
Yeah, but even with that, I guess in my opinion, I mean, he's proven himself to cover the things that I was concerned about, and I guess I had no concerns about what he's doing at this point, but, just my opinion, I mean, you guys, you know, right, well, and that's, it's a valid question, I know, because that was a part of the discussion, which we wanted him to commit to Evans County, but I feel like he has committed to Evans County. I mean, even if he's not living here even full-time, I mean, he's got a family to consider and things like that too, people commute for work all the time, and honestly, with the candidate base we had, and the amount of people we interviewed, it's not like, oh, we threw out twenty-five people for this guy, I mean, we picked a good candidate out of the candidates we had, and I think he's done a good job, so...
And there's, there's a lot of counties that their road superintendent doesn't actually live in that county, you know that?
I'm listening. I'm sure Morton and Burley are probably an exception. They're written right next to each other, it's a river to bite.
Yeah, they actually, they actually kind of switch sides during the working days, so...
Anything else, Skylar? Anything for you, Skylar?
Nope, I'll just stick around for the bills, in case you have a question on them.
Sure, yeah, maybe a little bit, I mean, probably be, might be an hour or two yet, so it's up to you, if you wanna just come back, maybe?
Yeah, I'll come back in an hour.
I'd say it'd be at least three o'clock, so...
Okay.
Okay. Ron Dykma here?
Want to do that utility permit, Ken?
Yeah, we can do it. So it looks like they're boring under section of road on Ninety-Ninth Street Southeast and Twelve Avenue Southeast from north to south. Skylar said it's okay, he signed up on it, so, motion to approve table or deny, the utility permit for Ken?
I'll make him approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Allen to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Everly. Any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Or approved. So the quick claim deed for Ron and Laura Lee Dykma's, was Ron gonna be present? I know he was here earlier.
He was here earlier.
I don't know, he's really a old dude, brother.
Is this old Highway eighty-three stuff again?
Yeah.
Ken?
It's just a right of way.
Pretty much a kind of the park for the course, and we can do it on the other side.
Right, he's got a, he's got a property that, but's, an area in which we have extra right of way for half of it, so this would kind of clean up his...
So basically, you've been doing the same we've been doing for everything, you've been doing...
Right, we put it down to seventy-five feet. There is his property there, so you see him in West Third.
Sure.
It kind of, that's, we're getting rid of that and straightening out.
Yeah.
There's a hundred feet there, just put it back to seventy-five.
So we're putting it down to seventy-five?
Yeah.
Yeah? Well, I think that old Highway eighty-three right of way, I mean, that's, we've proven there's not a lot of it, we probably need anymore, and it's the way to do it, so, we have that deed here, right?
Copying or...
Oh, you got it? Here, you got it?
Yeah, I think I got it, I'm packing yours. I think you guys all have it, right? Too many papers, I'm gonna need to file one, get one up here pretty soon. I reviewed it anyway, I guess, so I don't know. You guys have any opinions on it?
I look at it, I look at it.
So Joe, you drafted it, right?
Yeah.
I guess we have a motion to approve table or deny the quick claim deed for Ron and Laura Lee Dykma for the old eighty-three right of way? Motion by Commissioner Everly, second by Commissioner Metairie. Any more discussion on the quick claim deed? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Quick claim deed approved. Commissioner Culver coming back? Ready?
Do you have that proposal coming?
Yeah, I, in my infinite stack of papers here, I've... Yeah, I, in my infinite stack of papers here, I gotta come. Okay, well, we might have to use that one, because apparently...
You don't have one?
I have one, it's in this packet, so...
Oh, he'll be back.
Yeah, come on, it's on.
Oh, Don, oh, it was, it was really chilling. That, that, uh, great type, very convenient, yeah. There was, oh, there, there was nobody, I was here, and you knew they were open, they, they, now you're...
Oh, girl, just a couple years ago, along the six, seven, eight, nine, yeah?
Yeah, you know, Ray Sheed, yeah, great, she go, she keep going there, and he cuts a trick, and, yeah, kids.
Okay, um... Joe's getting his note restamp for that quick claim deed, so, uh, next item that we'll quickly discuss would be just the discussion for the Veterans, uh, Veterans Affairs hiring. Uh, do we have a job description for that, Marles?
I don't, I mean, you guys want me to, um...
Yeah.
Advertise it?
I think, I think we should, yeah.
I'll call the Veterans Affairs Officer, pardon, get things going. I think, you want me to start doing it now, or?
Yeah, well, I would say, yeah, as soon as possible here, you know, reasonable. Put the job up for...
I thought that was a big, right?
Yeah, I thought that was for Donna, but... No. No, but we should put it out soon. So, yeah, if they have a job description that's specific to that job, I suppose use that one, okay? Yeah, I would say list it as soon as you get it.
Okay.
Might as well put it out for...
Sure will.
For applications, so that was the only reason I wanted to discuss that, just to make sure we get that moving, so...
Okay.
Is she okay?
Yeah, I think she's just on the phone. Can we start the ARPA discussion a little early with you, Gary, or is somebody else speaking for us?
Greg, we gotta...
Okay.
Greg, we can do that, he's definitely done, come on up.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, we'll, we'll take you guys a little early then.
Stuff on the...
Josh, you got the building permits, where do you think?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, I hope Craig can, let's move on that, please. So building permit for Nathan Bungartner to erect a twenty-eight by fifty-two garage in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-Six, Township One Thirty-Two, Range Seventy-Six.
And, uh, nothing to the existing house?
Yeah, I should, all of it at the other road. Other road?
Yeah.
Partway, that's actually private driving.
Everything checked out, Josh?
Yep, I'm good.
Um, motion to approve table or deny the building permit for Nathan Bungartner? Motion to approve by Commissioner Holmes, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Mityer, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, permit approved. Second is the annual management program for Langley's Bay. Should add something to your packet there from, I believe that's Corps of Engineers, or is that our...
Well, this is what we put together, we have a ton of that.
Okay. Very significant increases or anything, nothing really changed, same?
Have to be everything the same as possible.
Pretty close to what it was.
Yeah, it's probably a little change to garbage or something, but it looks like it's pretty well on par with all the rest. And then Game and Fish does supplement some funds for that, too, so...
Did they donate some to take care of that one down?
For Raisleye? I don't know, I know they just sold them.
Did the wildlife company donate some?
Yes, they gave a thousand dollars.
Are they gonna do that any year?
You want me to request it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so permit, or, uh, motion to approve table or deny the annual management program for Langley's Bay?
I'll make the motion for it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Everly, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mityer, is there any more discussion? Annual management program, Langley's Bay. Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Approved. Next is a building permit for River Plains Co-op to install a billboard along Highway eighty-three, in southeast quarter, southeast quarter of Section Twenty-Two, Township One Thirty-One, Range Seventy-Six.
How big is the billboard?
It's a two-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet, it's gonna be fourteen feet by fifteen feet. I'm not talking about, uh... So, it's fifteen feet by fifteen feet, and you guys, hold on, it's going, right? So just north of the road, right? It's gonna be outside the...
Rightward?
Outside the rightways, it's, setbacks are good, um, the radius for intersection is good. Now, State Century Code says if it's within six-hundred-and-sixty feet of the state highway, it has to meet some specs, and they do it because they actually do business on that parcel. So I think they, I talked to Joe about this yesterday, so I'm gonna meet the states, that's what they're calling specs. And on our, um, restrictions here, we have two-hundred-square-foot signs is max, but that's in industrial and commercial districts. It is taxed as commercial, but it is, if you look at our zoning, that is agricultural. So we, and there's nothing that states, like, there's a maximum square foot issued in agricultural district. But our map is in this, it is zoned as agricultural, so, so there's no restriction. And I verified that with Joe, it does have a guess, or is it...
And it's gonna face, what, north and south, it faces east? Or is it gonna face north and south?
It'll be, yes, you can see on the north and south.
Is it gonna hinder the view?
Nope, well, it's, we have that radius, so two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the intersection, it's pass that. Like, I measured it out, it's over three-hundred-something feet, the way from that is, I can tell. So, you know, it's all, it'll, it'll be all around once in horizontal minutes, so...
Isn't that big of a question?
It's just kind of that gray area where it's supposed to be, not more than a few feet in, in itself, real commercial, but we still have, it's taxed.
Well, I think you'd have to honor the zoning, now, if it's zoned as agricultural, then I suppose there's really no limits on the sign signs, they're really gonna...
Yeah, there's nothing in there.
And, I mean, the big thing would be the impact of the DOT and the state highway there, and if they're outside of those impacts, I guess... Joey, you didn't see any legal issue with that, or?
I know, the sign, the sign's good.
Okay.
The sign's good.
And then, um, they'd have to pay a different fee, you know, because we charge this in square footage, and that one, done, right? So there's any more, or the application? Or that, let's take it.
Okay, so a motion to approve table or deny the building permit for River Plains Co-op?
I'll make the motion, it's accepted.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mityer, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, permit approved. Okay, we'll stop here, we'll take the ARPA Punks conversation, so... Craig or Gary?
We got, um, Charlotte coming in, too.
Oh, okay, well, then we'll just keep moving until she comes to them. So, okay, so building permit for Stephen C. Becker to erect a twenty-four-by-thirty-two vacation home on the northwest quarter of Lot One, Section Seven, Township One Twenty-Nine, Range Seventy-Six.
Yeah, he did it. He put it up last fall, so he paid double on the, because otherwise he would have charged him double for that vacation fee since he already started, probably, but he's done, the house is up, um, I'll be able to get close enough to get a picture.
Is that on the west side of eighteen oh four?
Yeah, it's...
Where they extend it to the west?
I'll show you here.
Just to the north of the Robach powers across Missouri, right?
East of it, so, he is, so eighteen oh fours are here, he is Becker Lake, basically. It's around there, like, this is Indy Barnstead, it's right here. So setbacks are still good, um...
So we're down on the big, right?
This is far southwest.
This is like the southwest part of county?
Yeah, so like, yeah, yeah.
I see ninety-seven streets, so definitely south, southwest, right?
A mile or more, here's Will's, about a mile, a mile and a half, no, right here.
Pretty tough to come up with setbacks, there's nothing around, huh? I mean, that's out there, okay.
But you remember?
Yeah, I didn't think I was doing it there.
Sorry, if you had it.
Oh, okay, there was, sorry.
I got everyone's clear.
Here's one, you can just, you can...
They sell this back for being Steve Becker.
Okay, so a motion to approve table or deny the building permit for Stephen Becker, and he's, uh, paid the penalty for building without a permit, but it looks like everything checked out other than that, right, Josh?
Correct. It was good.
Okay, so... Motion to approve table or deny?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Mityer makes a motion to approve the permits, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Well, second part of the sheet is here with the signature one, so... Is this the front page?
Yeah.
Want me to sign the bottom or something?
Just send, or we, or on the backside of it.
Okay, and then, um, the appointment of a county committee board member.
Yeah, you guys appointed Kurt Weiser to serve in the county committee, and he decided he didn't want that appointment, so, um, he asked Scott Baumheller if he'd be interested. Scott said he would, so, and I guess he talked to Dave Culver, too.
Okay, and this was for that school board committee, basically, right?
Yeah, it's about the county committee, it says if there's any annexations or distributions or something to schools.
So Scott will do it, yeah.
Scott Miller, so Scott Baumheller said he would take it.
Okay, does anybody else have a, um, anybody else have an individual they would like to consider for appointment on that board? Hearing any, I guess I'll take, entertain a motion to approve or deny the appointment of Scott Baumheller to the county committee board?
I'll make a motion, too.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve Scott Baumheller for the county committee board, seconded by Commissioner Mityer, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Appointment approved. I know, Dave, you said he was taking a breather, I don't know if you're not feeling well, or... No, Josh checked out, she said it's okay, but...
Yeah, he's, he's sitting out here, not feeling good. I don't need some.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess here, and then we'll wait, and then we can go back to the ARPA discussion, so, okay.